So we'll open the meeting for July 7, 2020. This meeting is being recorded. If anybody is recording it, that is fine. You just need to let us know. Okay. We'll just take sort of attendance here since we are doing this by Zoom, so we know who's on. We have, in addition to myself, from the planning board, we have Dave Spina, we have Jessica Thorne, we have Dave Sutton, and we have Marcus Speltz. We have Megan Lake Cap on as well. And then we have Chris, and I apologize, Chris, I'm forgetting your last name. From our Leveque Associates and Dr. Walls, I see on here as well.
Good evening.
Did I miss anybody? Okay. All right, so I'm going to talk Town Planners Report. Megan, did Alan give you some information to provide on that?
Yes, he did. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
For those of you on the board that don't know, Alan's father passed away last night, so he's not able to do this. Yeah. So he, and I'm going to get a card or something tomorrow. I'm going to contact you guys so that we can send something over to the family to give our condolences. So you'll be hearing from me tomorrow.
Yeah, we could send an address, mailing address.
Yep. He had two things. American Inn, he has had, someone potentially wants to buy, and he's just been going back and forth with the engineering firm that's representing the buyer. They've just been asking for just pass special permits, information on the property, things like that, resolved all those issues. And that's basically all he said. He wanted to let you know is he's resolved anything that they've asked, and obviously there's interest there, and that's all we can really say about that. He also has talked to Randy from DPW, as well as Chris Carney, who is here from Leveque regarding the issues with the 0772 and 774 College Highway. And they have resolved most of those issues and addressed everything. So those are the two things he wanted me to mention. And one other thing when we talk about 772 and 774, Conservation had their meeting last night, and they are asking us, they want us to recommend we help, so hold on, let me just read this. They want us, Conservation recommends we help them post a stormwater bond for $50,000 prior to construction on 0772 and 774 College Highway. So that's about it. I can't really answer many questions because I don't know a whole lot about that really at all, but those are the things Alan asked me to tell you guys about.
Okay. All right. So 710, public comments. Anybody have something that is not before the board that they wish to bring to the attention of the board? Okay. So 715, which is 0772 and 774 College Highway Public Hearing continues from last week. Let me just pull up what we have. And then, Chris, do you want to just address what has happened in the meantime?
Sure. Yep, so I had quite a bit of correspondence with both Randy Brown and Alan, and it all went very well. I think we reached resolutions on all of their comments. Some of them can be addressed via conditional approval, and some of them are addressed on a revised plan set, which I sent to Alan today, but under the circumstances, he wasn't really available. So there is a revised plan set which covers some of the required revisions. Others will need to be written into the conditional approval because they just aren't relevant to the plan set, really. So that happened late last week after planning board meeting, and then yesterday we had the conservation meeting, that notice of intent, NOI was approved at last night's conservation meeting. And there were some discussions about a bond. They listed both the opportunity to have a $10,000 bond for stormwater, and in lieu of that $10,000 bond, if it wasn't required by planning, they would require a $50,000 bond. This is where I'm just going to admit that I'm out of my element. I'm not sure what you typically do in Southwick for plans like this, but both the number 10,000 and 50,000 were thrown out yesterday's bond amounts. Obviously, we would appreciate the $10,000 figure and would like to move towards whatever approvals would push us towards that $10,000 bond number.
Chris, what, how did that come up in the conservation? What were they focused on?
I think it's just a measure to ensure that the stormwater basins are built according to the construction documents, and if they fail, that there's some sort of retainer available to them. So typically, on a project like this, they're not bonded, but I think because of the size of it, Conservation was a bit concerned. But I can't really give you the specifics as to why a $10,000 bond or a $50,000 bond is applicable to this project.
All right. Let me just pull up. Give me one minute. I'm trying to apologize. My computer just died right before we started, and now I'm trying to pull it back up to get Randy's comments. But, I mean, I could tell you as I'm looking at it on, you know, my phone here, that he seemed perfectly fine with everything other than, you know, I mean, there's going to be certain things that are included as conditions. You know, we'll specifically note sort of either your response to what he had raised before, which, you know, he's subsequently okay with, or things that need to be addressed going forward that, like you said, are not necessarily on the plans that you have now, but are things that need to be addressed. So we'll throw those in as conditions. But it seems to me from looking at the email that everything seems to be on the up and up with DPW as far as their concerns.
Yeah, when I left my conversation with Randy, he was okay with having the original plan set submittal for that to be the submittal to be reviewed by the board, and all of his items could be addressed via conditional approval. Right after that, I received some comments from Marcus, and that triggered up some plan revisions. So while I was revising this plan set, I was able to incorporate some of those DPW comments into this revised plan set. So all in all, this is providing more detail as requested by, I guess, Marcus, and then I'm also addressing some of Randy's comments, which were not necessarily required, but it'll be helpful to have them addressed in this revised plan set instead of having them be part of a conditional approval.
Whether it's you or Marcus who addresses the changes, I don't care, but what were the subsequent changes that were raised by Marcus?
Let me make sure. Can I share my screen? Okay, can you give me the ability to share your screen?
Oh, yep.
Michael Richard Utzinger is on now.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. It's better than last week.
Good.
Thank you.
I don't know why it's no longer giving me that option. How about this? Chris, so let's just do a minute. Can you do it now?
I can.
Okay.
All right, so this is the revised plan set. As you see, it has a revision date of July 7, 2020. That's today. And the comments that were addressed, just, I guess, to give a brief summary, since last week's meeting was just a week ago, I'm going to really skip through the details of the project and just address the revisions to the plan set that took place over this last week. But as a brief summary, this is a proposed mixed-use development, existing 15-acre parcel of land, just a portion of it would be developed, and it would be developed by the construction of three buildings, including a multi-use building out front and two buildings in the rear, and two stormwater basins to collect these to runoff from impervious surfaces. So that's the brief summary, revisions to this plan. The first one came from Marcus. The white pine trees over here and here have been replaced by a blue spruce tree as requested.
The reason for that request is that the white pine do not do well. The leading growth on the white pine will get hit by an insect, and so they keep growing out and out, and they get, you know, kind of distorted. So
Agreed.
It's not a great landscape tree as far as I'm concerned.
Sure. So that was revised as requested. These two trees here were previously labeled as crab apples. They are now hawthorn trees. Crab apples do shed apples, of course, which can be hazardous in a parking lot area. So hawthorns are a better choice there. That was an RLA revision. The second revision was the use description for building in two and three. I believe this was also a comment from Marcus. They are now labeled as retail slash wholesale business and storage warehouse for the labeled uses of building two and three. The third revision came after a conversation with the fire chief. As you know, he had discussed having a hydrant at the entrance here, and then there was one proposed here. After discussion with him, he felt that one hydrant placed in the middle of the site would be able to serve all three buildings appropriately. So that hydrant location has been revised from the end of the water line to approximately the midpoint. And this falls nicely in an area that should remain untouched in Phase Two and Three of the project. That's the reason for this specific location right here. Also, in order to keep this hydrant as close to the edge of pavement as possible, the three utility lines that run parallel to the driveway were shifted down to the south four feet. That'll bring the hydrant. I also shortened the trunk line to the hydrant, so it's about 12 feet closer to the edge of pavement than you saw previously. As requested by Randy, bollards have been added to the entrance of all of the vegetated filter strips. You'll see three bollards here, three bollards here, three bollards here. They're placed about six feet apart, and that should limit vehicular traffic into these vegetated filter strips, and also be a nice indication for snowplow operators that this is not an area to plow into. That would be the fifth revision. The sixth revision is the dry well. A note has been added that, based on conversations with Randy, as they're excavating the soils for this subsurface basin, as they excavate for the installation of the dry well, that they contact us and we evaluate soil conditions and make sure no seasonal high groundwater is observed during the excavation process. That's instead of performing additional test pits at this point in time. It'll really be a test pit done at the time of construction. And then the seventh revision, final revision, is very minor. The inlet structures, those dry wells, Randy requested that Note 10 be updated to show that inlet protection is added to the dry wells until the site is stabilized. So those are the seven revisions of the plan, and I think that's going to conclude my presentation for tonight.
Okay. Give me one minute to see here.
I didn't notice, but were the left-hand turn lanes included in that revised plan?
No, they haven't been included yet, and I think the way this will work out is that if Phase Two and Phase Three are as they move forward, I think that will be the time to open up this curb cut and allow for that dedicated left turn lane. The traffic expectations from this site, I don't think warrant three entrances or a 36-foot wide curb cut at College Highway. If additional phases are pursued or when additional phases are pursued, an additional turn lane should be analyzed at that point.
All right.
Of course, that could be changed via conditional approval.
Did Randy Brown have any comment on the entryway as far as the three lanes, or he wasn't aware of it?
He made no comment during his initial review, and from our perspective, a no comment is he is okay with the design as is.
Okay. Any comments from the board members? Nothing. Any comments from members of the public? Nothing. Okay. All right, so let me pull up if I can here, I think.
Excuse me, I have one more revision. I guess I could share.
Sure.
Not on my list, but another minor one, but I want to make sure to be thorough. A construction staging area was added right here. This would be for a construction trailer, stockpile of materials. This was placed so that it falls north of the entry drive, and it's a great place to stage materials because erosion control will be naturally mitigated by the construction of a raised road, so sediment will not be traveling to the south from here due to this. Additionally, it's doubly protected by a silt fence along the down gradient limited work. I think that's the final revision.
Okay. All right, so let me just share my screen here. All right, can everybody see that email? Yes, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Randy Brown, yeah.
So here are Randy's revised comments, just so everybody can go through them, but they're pretty straightforward, and again, we can kind of put them into generally into conditions. And they'll just get dealt with as they submit their additional plans and final plans and proceed with the project. So starting with number one, he's going to provide the plan that was missing. Number two, Randy's indicated that DPW is okay with the approach where they use paint in or signs to mark locations or parking was not permitted and clearly inform the snowplow drivers not to dump snow in these areas.
So I think just reviewing, yes, I don't mean
You have changed that, though. Is that right? You're going to put in?
Yeah, I think after reviewing that, and especially after yesterday's conservation meeting, painted marks won't stand up in the snow or indicate to plow drivers to not plow into that area. They had quite a bit of concern with plowing into improper areas on site, so the bollards were chosen.
Okay, all right. So all right, so let me just make a note. If you're going to throw that into the decision. All right. Number three. So this is what you, I guess this is a little bit different from what you discussed before. Am I right or am I wrong on that?
I believe this is reflected on the plan set. So these would be, the applicant will conduct test pits to confirm seasonal groundwater elevations during construction. So that would be during the installation of the dry wells. We will be out there to inspect
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. You're right. Yes, thank you. All right.
Item number one, number two, and number three have been reflected on a revised plan set.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. You mentioned that. I didn't read that that way. Okay, so that's while you're, during construction, you're going to do that. That's what you said before. Okay, got it. Yeah, with four, you know, about the box trucks only, we've talked about that before. Five, again, you mentioned that last time about the 1% minimum throughout its applicant will provide the contractor with additional spot elevations to ensure that water drains off the driveway and parking areas properly. Now, we can kind of put that six, seven are fine.
Would you like me to go through those? I don't
Go through which?
I just want to make sure when you're writing this decision, you're aware which ones are reflected on the plan set and which ones were not addressed.
Sure, you know, we can divide it up that way. I don't think, Chris, I I'm guessing that well, you know what? Go through it. Go through it, because that'll limit the conditions we have to put in there. So why don't you go through which ones are on and which ones aren't?
So number four was not, I don't think any conditional approval will be required for number four. That is so I believe one through four have been addressed. Number five, again, no plan revisions. Typically, we do construction stakeout, so we do provide additional spot elevation throughout the site for contractor construction. So I believe that is addressed as well. Number six was addressed on sheet C3, demolition and removal. The inlet protection has been added. This note has been added. Sheet D1, we understand this, but again, I believe this wouldn't be part of a conditional approval as the paving detail is acceptable for the traffic. I believe Dr. Walls will consider a thicker pavement along the driveway area. That would be a conditional administrative review item. Increasing the thickness of the pavement would only be a benefit to the town.
So yeah, let me just stop there for one minute and back up if I can, just very quickly. I don't see seven as a condition, and I probably skipped over those two quickly. Seven, you know, is more a suggestion than anything else. And we talked about what trucks are coming. I'm not sure I agree that four, you know, I mean, there are aspects of this which are sort of conditioned on the representation that you know, this is being intended for a use that would only be for box trucks, you know, for deliveries rather than anything more significant. I, I, I think that has to be a condition because it just has a lot of impact on, not a lot of impact, but it has impact on other things. Just looking at seven, I mean, that has an impact on that. Though that's, I agree, that's not necessarily a requirement or a suggestion, but you know, I assume it has to do with, it has some impact on fire, I think, if I remember the letter from last time. So I think four has to be a condition.
Okay.
Would we specify the maximum gross weight or something to that effect?
I think
Alan and/or Randy Brown probably have a handle on.
I'm not sure it's, I forget, wasn't there some reference to, and I, oh no, there was in here, right, to well, I'll let, I'll let Randy or Alan offer the language to sort of put that in more technical terms than I possibly know. But the idea being that it's not going to be anything more than box trucks for deliveries. You know, and I'm not sure. You know, weight is, is, almost has to do more with the maintenance of the owner rather than anything else. It's the turning radius that I think is the bigger issue. You know, from a town standpoint. So let me just, Chris, let me just go back to six, just so I, because I'm not sure I heard you correctly. I mean, is that, that's going to be a is that reflected, or is that something that, is that a condition that you suggest, or did you suggest that should not be a condition?
The revised plan set, there is a note added to install inlet protection on the dry wells as requested.
Okay. All right. Okay, perfect. So that doesn't need to be?
I think number four is a moot point for, from my perspective. I think just based on the radiuses that are provided for that building, there's no way large trucks can reach the rear. So if a condition to not have large trucks go in the rear is requested or wanted by the town, I don't think there's any issue from the applicant's perspective, because those trucks simply cannot get into the back of the building, so.
Yeah, no, you know, in, to some degree, we're thinking more long-term and not necessarily short-term, right? I mean, it's just, it's going to be part of the use of the property, and so if it's sold or if it's leased, or if it's whatever else, and it becomes not Dr. Walls, you know, it just needs to it needs to run with that so that they know what the use can be. So.
I understand. I think that I'd be happy to work with Alan on that language, because I do want to mention that we don't really want to limit the site in terms of vehicle sizes entering for other phases of the project. Phase Three may require larger vehicles, which would be why thicker pavement is being considered by the applicant through the driveway. So just hopefully I can work with Alan for very precise language that would just limit large trucks to the rear of buildings two and three, or to the sides of building one, but not throughout
That's, that's fine. We could certainly work with the language to, to to address simply the concern that's there, right? I mean, that's all that we want to address. It's, like I said, I the thickness, that to me is your issue, right? I mean, if you don't have it thick enough and you have to repair it every year, that's your issue. It's more that, you know, truck's going to stop there, this or that, that becomes more of a bigger issue. You know, so I'm not, that, we can find language for that. I'm not too worried about that. All right, so number eight, did number eight get on to the the plan or no?
So number eight is that there's, I guess, a detail that is not required. The manhole shown on the detail sheet is not appropriate for a water meter pit. Those need to be watertight, nor is it appropriate for an electric manhole pit or a gas pit. So really, that detail can be removed from the plan set. It is still on the plan set, but it's really extraneous information that doesn't really come into play.
Is there already pits for those?
There are, there are not pits. The plan set is labeled to coordinate all utility connections with the respective utility provider so that we are willing to work with the water department, gas company, and electric company to provide meter pits or surface transformers as required. That should be addressed in a conditional approval.
So number eight requires a condition of some kind.
If you wouldn't, yes.
Yeah, it will, you know, I mean, there's general language in there about working, you know, with the other departments for what they require for permits, but we'll have something that just isolates out a little bit for the pits. Okay, so. Okay, so. What's the situation with number nine?
Number nine, yeah. So the plans are currently late shown. They currently have a water line going across College Highway and then parallel to the driveway. At this point, the volume of water required for phase one is unknown. We are still working on that. As well as the water requirements for phase two and potentially phase three are unknown at this point in time. So the size of that water line is still to be determined. That is as shown on the plan set, that the water line size will be. Determined by a mechanical engineer or architect. Randy is okay with that language, but has warned us that we need to understand that water may be a shortage when moving to phase two and phase three of this project. The alternative connection, we are right now showing the worst case scenario that would be tapping into the water main on College Highway. And that would be requiring a trench cut across College Highway. Alternatively, we are looking into tapping into the water line near the American Inn. That's located on the east side of College Highway, so no pavement cuts would be required. Water line would be run across the frontage of this property, Mr. Walls' property, and then connect to a, the existing eight-inch PVC pipe at American Inn. We're still coordinating the water requirements for American Inn, whether there's surplus in that existing eight-inch line that services the American Inn. If there's surplus there, and if that surplus is sufficient to service Dr. Walls' properties. So currently we're showing worst case scenario. We feel that it, that if the water line needs to be moved, that would fall under an administrative review and not reopen permitting. Randy's aware of all these concerns and we're working with him to accurately size the water line and connect to the best place first, the town of Southwick.
So we could have a general condition that just says the water supply will be coordinated with the water department, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so. Okay. All right, number 10, we sort of discussed.
Meter pit. So that.
Number 11.
Tapping sleeve and valve to tie into the existing water main so as to not take the line out of service during construction. That's part of the reason why we're looking into the American Inn connection, but we have no issues with providing a tapping sleeve and valve to tie in at College Highway. But that is not a plan revision. That will be part of a condition.
You say, I'm sorry, did you say that will be a condition?
That should be a condition, correct?
Yeah, that's what I, okay. All right, all right.
12, the existing one-inch water service that feeds the building must be cut and capped at the water main. We understand that. We haven't shown, we haven't revised the plans to show that demolition and removal. That would be a trench cut into College Highway in order to cap the line right at the service. I think until we have the water line situation resolved completely. We are going to not show the demolition of that and simply work with Randy to have, to, for language. Conditional language that would state all abandoned water lines must be capped at the service line. I've worked with Randy and sent him an email and discussed how to like condition that. There's a potential that that water, one-inch service may be utilized to serve building one, and in that case, it would not need to be.
Okay. All right, so that's, well.
13, the checklist in the stormwater permit application indicates that the location of stockpiled construction materials, locations for construction trailers, and locations for other waste items are included in the application. But this information is not shown. Please verify the location of these items. That comment was addressed on sheet C3 of the revised plan set provides area for trailers and stockpiles and waste.
Okay, so that's the plan. And the plan stated today, right, Chris?
Correct. I can read 14 if you. I'm not trying to take.
Making notes as we go along, so I apologize if I'm taking a step here. Yeah, Chris, what was the original date of the plan?
May 15th, 2020.
Thank you. Okay, so yeah, if you want to go to 14, please, that'd be great.
14, the applicant shall secure all necessary approvals from Mass DOT for any work within College Highway. We understand that and we will be submitting to Mass DOT, I believe, after tonight's meeting. We're expecting a bit of a review process from Mass DOT. That's been our experience. And so that affords the board some time to sort out some of these conditions. I don't think we are. Expecting any written decisions prior to next August's meeting.
Okay. And then 15, you know, we have to go through that. There is a condition on there. I don't even know if it's a condition or, it must be a condition, actually. But it just talks about, you know, needing approvals from other entities. You know, I'm not sure it goes into as much detail as Randy does here, but it, it covers the need for other permits and approvals prior to construction.
I also did have a conversation with the, I believe we're wrapped up with Randy's comments?
We are, yes.
Yep. So I did have a conversation with the fire chief. He mentioned that the sprinkler threshold for building one will be 12,000 square feet. Last meeting, I erroneously stated 10,000 square feet. Building one will be very close to 10,000 square feet in area, but it will be under that 12,000 square foot threshold, so building one will not be requiring sprinklers.
Okay.
And then the only other comment or discussion item with the fire chief was the hydrant location.
Okay. Okay. All right, any comments from members of the board on what we just discussed?
The job site trailer and excavation material stay there until building two and three are done or will be removed if building two or three are not in the immediate future?
I believe phase one, the construction of phase one is all, would be completed approximately the same time. So those construction trailers would remain until construction is complete? Does that answer?
Two and three, so you're doing, going to two, building two or three shortly after?
All within, yeah, within, I think, the two-year timeframe. I'm not sure what Southwick generally has for construction timeframes after permitting, but I believe Dr. Walls is hoping to maybe say something.
Yeah, it's.
I was, I'm sorry, I was just going to mention, I think phase 1A and 1B, we were going to complete and hold off. With a timeframe of unknown right now in phase two and three. So my goal would be to remove that job work area after phase 1A and 1D was complete.
Okay, then just set it back up once you decide going forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, any other questions from members of the board? Okay. I don't think we have any members of the public. But let's see. No. So. I don't have any other questions. Let me just, I'm trying to pull up. Quickly. The stormwater. Because I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't think, Marcus, you can certainly weigh in because you have more experience than I do. But I don't have a memory of ever requiring any kind of bond short of a development, right? I mean, I'm not sure. I guess solar we have. But other than those two, other than those two, have we required any type of bond? At all? Can you think of any?
What I'm aware of, like you said, if we have a subdivision project, something like that, we do. Or do we have the authority to do that in our stormwater bylaw? I think that would be something to make sure. We got the bylaw.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to pull up and look to see what, it just hasn't. Before I.
I don't recall doing anything like that.
Yeah, I.
Think that the specifics of the conservation comment where if the planning board is not going to have a $10,000 bond on this project, they will require a $50,000 bond. Which that all took me by surprise because like you're saying, bonds are typically for a public job and not for this type of project. So. I wasn't sure how to address it, but of course, a $10,000 bond is better, but I don't see this as a bonded project, period, but we'll defer to you.
But I'm the bad guy, so.
You know, let me just, let me just see, I just.
It's 185-36.1 is the bylaw.
Yeah. Hold on.
But whether or not you can find anything in there.
Was it 36.1, right?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Section L is your security for performance section.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, we can require something. But we need either Alan or Randy Brown to generate a number. To cover whatever expense. The security so required is in this action to include provisions relative to forfeiture for failure to complete the work specified in the Stormwater Management Plan. So we're.
Hold on.
Making sure the work occurs because if the site forever, for whatever reason, gets abandoned, we still need to have the stormwater managed. But it could be, you know, not a big number. But it's there.
Evening Doug.
Hi.
Just give me one minute here. Oh, you know, Mr. Mowgli. Planning board knowledge, maybe you could offer some opinion on this. Have you ever required a bond on something other than a? Development or a solar project?
I seem to think yes, but I don't recall exactly what it was.
It seems.
A cell tower. We did it on a cell tower.
Fair, yeah. I guess that would be included too, sort of the solar project where you have significant equipment out there.
It was decommissioning bond, right, for something like, what, what's the, what's the occasion?
This is for Dr. Walls' development. I'm told that conservation has said, if we don't put a $10,000 bond on it, they're putting a $50,000 bond on it. So. I, I, yeah, I just, I didn't, I don't know anything about a authority. But I've, we've never had to do that on a project like this before, so I just, we're, I was kind of looking through the bylaw to see what the story.
Let me, I think the only advice I could give here would be. The same advice that I always used to always give our board and will gladly give any other board, right? Because I hate to hear language like that. Everybody, every boarding commission has a role and a purpose and they should stay in their damn lane, right? So you are planning and zoning, right? So if the plan conforms to zoning and what they're doing doesn't, I don't see how that, you know, there's not, that's your purview. And, and by the same token, conservation is, theirs is under the Wetland Control Act or whatever the section of Mass General Law that they operate under. And they have purview in that area. So they can't hold you hostage to say, well, you have to put a bond or we're going to put a bond. If they have the right or the need to put a bond, then they can, but there's no, there's no reason for that. And it usually even, you know, we even took a lot of the language out. Some of it still makes it into some special permit decisions that says, oh, border health has to do this and conservation has to do that. That's mostly for the applicant to make sure that he needs to know that there's other parts of process that they need to follow. We don't, we specifically years ago took out things that conservation needed to do and put them in a planning board decision. And the same thing goes for conservation, right? They should not have anything to do with zoning in their decision process or in their decision writing process. That's their job. That's their function. Let them take care of that. You guys take care of the zoning and planning side. Then, and if it, if it becomes an issue, chairman to chairman need to have a conversation about that and say, hey, guys, that's not the way things are done in this town. We each got to stay in our lane and do our job because it's the same thing, you know, border health may weigh in because there may be something to do with a doctor's office and some of the rules and regs for sewer and sewerage and septic. You're not going to get involved in that, other than the fact that those, if there are things about that and it need to be in the plan and it or driving the size of the sidewalk or some retention thing or tank in the ground, that's that. But let border health worry about that. That's not your concern. They have their experts on that. You know what I mean? That's my point.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I agree with you. And I'm not, you know, this is the first I'm hearing about it, so I'm trying to process it through and try to, you know, I don't. My concern is more that I don't want this issue to impact the applicant necessarily.
And that's the whole point here, Chairman Doherty, is that it shouldn't, right? Dr. Walz is, he's got an application in front of Concom. He's got an application in front of, of you. Yours is one for zoning and a special permit under. Yours is one for zoning and a special permit under, under zoning and that, that you can grant or not grant. I don't see that if he, the zone change is already done, right?
Right.
Right, so that's already done. So now he's got a plan in front of you. What, what would he need to bond?
It's for the stormwater management.
Stormwater.
You have, you have the right under that, you are the designated board to hear that, right? Under the, under the law. And you may very well have the right to put in a bond for that. And if, and if indeed you have that right, you should do it. But it shouldn't be at the behest of conservation, that's actually should come from the DPW, which is actually the oversight board that they've, they delegated the here, the hearing, hearing process for that under zoning, only to make it easier for an applicant so that they don't have to, there wouldn't have to be another hearing process for DPW to do it. In fact, eventually this whole thing, there's going to be a zoning bylaw change at some point in the future, maybe a year or two down the road, to actually move this whole water quality permitting thing out of zoning and move it into the general town bylaw, just because it's, it's the proper venue for it. It's just, it's put here for convenience. And if under that water quality permit, you need to have, that there's a provision for a bond and you as a board determine that the work, you know, should have one, then okay, go ahead. And it should be reasonable based on the work that needs to be done in order to secure the, the, the water quality coming off the site, right, and make it right if, if for some reason Dr. Walts or successor doesn't get that project done in, in the way it was supposed to be done. Right? But it shouldn't be at the behest, other than under public comment and not certainly under duress of, if you don't put one, we're going to do one for 50. That's, that's not right, in my opinion.
I couldn't agree more.
Boy, I wish the board of selectmen meeting ran another.
So before we close the hearing, before we close the hearing, Michael, members of the planning board could authorize you to consult with the director of the Department of Public Works to determine the appropriateness of a performance bond.
Well, I'm not even sure, I mean, like I said, I we haven't required it for anything but a development and, you know, decommissioning bonds, I don't.
Well, in this case, it's almost a commercial development, we're talking about multiple buildings. It's not a residential, but it's certainly big and it's putting an awful lot of land. Would make it something that I think that if the conservation commission is saying, hey, this is a big one. And if these drainages are not put in correctly, that's, we're going to have an issue in this protected wetland. So it makes sense whether it should have come via Arlevski's representation here at our meeting or via a letter from the Conservation Commission's chair is another issue. But I agree, we should have the DPW's input so that we're not putting an unfair amount on Mr. Walls here.
After reviewing your bylaws and conversations with Randy Brown or, and both Alan and Randy, bonds were never discussed, that comment came out of left field. But I think we are here today with either a $50,000 bond or a $10,000 bond. And unfortunately, it feels like we're wedged into this position. And I think personally, a $50,000 bond feels excessive for this project. I notice in your ordinance that you, it should be at least the total estimated cost of the construction of the stormwater management facility. And I would say 10,000 is much closer to this cost than 50,000.
I guess I'm saying we don't need to set a number, we just need, need to indicate direction. And Michael, you, you can do whatever needs to be done to make the decision. Otherwise, we really should close the public hearing this evening until we, you know, settle the matter.
There's no provision under the, under the water quality permit?
Oh, yes. Actually, I, you know, it's, we haven't dealt with it, we, we, whether we should have or not. I mean, we haven't dealt with bonds before, but it actually says shall require from the developer a security performance. So. Hold on a minute. I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. And I just, I, I don't disagree with you, Marcus, I think we'll probably just put in language that sort of defers the amounts of the bond, if any, to the recommendations of the DPW and of the DPW and town, you know, will consult with the town plan. But let me just see here.
Well, this matter could be settled before we actually issue the final decision.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, hopefully in the next month it gets resolved.
Yeah.
And Chris, you're gonna, you know, what you should be doing, this is where we go. I'll look through this quickly, but I mean, this is where we go, Chris, you should submit, you know, a, a estimated cost for the stormwater portion so that they could use that.
Okay.
And then, no. I have the feeling that, you know, you've worked with Randy, you know how he deals with things, I suspect this will be, you know, worked out in a pretty reasonable way. So.
We're happy to defer to DPW's recommendation on a bond amount.
All right.
I mean, conservation has standing under 185, what the hell is it, 185-36-1 D E, D1.
What do they have?
D1 and D2. Planning board with prior concurrence of DPW Director, Building Department and Conservation Commission, which concurrence will be deemed given if such agencies fail to respond in writing after receipt of written notice of waiver from the planning board. But you didn't waive this, you said that they need a water quality permit.
Right.
So D2 is out, but D1 is, is the issuance of special permit, a stormwater management permit, EPA stormwater management permit filing or waiver must be approved by the planning board. So then the conservation does not have standing. Any waiver shall be, we're not doing a waiver.
We're not doing.
No, but conservation has to, has to sign off on it, I don't know.
On work that's in, and you know, again, I'm not an expert on the conservation and I always just try to stay in my lane and let them decide what they have jurisdiction over and then what they have jurisdiction over becomes relevant to this. If they're doing work outside of the buffer or outside of wetland and this isn't, you know, isn't detrimental to the wetland, then that's, they have to determine that standing. But and I don't, I'd have to read this, it's been a long time since I read it as far as the bond, if anything. But you know, and the, a bond isn't necessarily at the applicant, this is just from prior, prior knowledge is, you know, the, the bond is not, the applicant doesn't have to deliver a bankbook for 100 grand if it's $100,000 bond. They may just have to give, you know, it's a, a security instrument that's acceptable to the town treasurer clerk collector. So that may very well just be an insurance policy or a surety bond, right? And they can, you know, Levec or whatever, or whoever the, you know, the applicant for that would be, or the, or Dr. Walts, through his, his, his land consultant can get, can get those at a much, you know, it's, he doesn't have to tie up 100 grand or whatever your bond amount is. And then they just ask for releases against it as you, as the project goes in. If it's, if the applicant is saying it's $10,000 worth of work, well, maybe they put up 10 grand, they go do the work and then immediately come and say, hey, we're done. Right? The, the building inspector and the DPW kind of look and go, yeah, that storm scepter, what they said on the plan is what they put in, it's at the right height, it's not crooked. Really, and just like you would do for a subdivision, you release the bond. It doesn't have to sit there to make sure it works for 20 years, it's inspected when it win it.
Yeah, no, I, that's fine, we can figure it out, it just seems like such a. I don't know, I mean, for the size of the project, this is, this is a minor portion, but.
And it might be just worth a phone call to the chair of the conservation and, and make sure that the chair is in concurrence with any other actors of, from that department to make sure that they've had that discussion in a public meeting as far as that goes, that, that of a bonding process that they may have available to them, that they choose to exercise because of a threat to the wetland. But I, that's up to, up to that board.
Yes, maybe I will give.
Because this, remember, this whole thing is dicey, it's just, this was actually, it should have been and is originally intended to be a DPW regulation. You know, but it was, it was designated back to us as the hearing board to hold all these hearings concurrent with a special permit application, because that's where we would see most of them, exactly like this one. To make it easier for the applicant, not, and to, you know, to try to be more consumer friendly and not have the applicant go through another permitting process on top of the conservation and the board health and the planning board.
Yeah, no, and that's, and what I'm thinking about now too is just the phased nature of this, right? I mean, I, I'm not. That's got to play into it somehow. I mean, you know, I don't, you're not going to post a bond and have to sit on it, whatever, until you get to the second or third phase. I mean, that's, you know.
I don't know, I don't know how it works. I mean, I saw the plan last week, I didn't, I was paying somewhat attention. They have a plan, I don't know if they have to put all the drainage in at once for the whole thing to work. Or the way they have it, if they do phase one, does that drainage stand on its own? And then if they do phase two and three, then that's fine. Then you could put that in your decision and so they only have to put up for the phase that they're working on. And if they don't build phase two and three in the back right away, there's no need to bond for that because it doesn't, the land is undisturbed.
No, I, that's what I'm trying to, Chris, what is, what is the, how is it structured?
Phase one is standalone, phase two and three would all have their independent stormwater management systems. This, really, this bond should be released, if, if it's decided it's relevant, this bond should be released after slopes are stabilized and construction of phase one is complete.
Well, I mean, I mean, it may be. It may be that you have to post another bond for phase two or.
Oh, yeah.
Great. But, but certainly isolated to phase one, whatever bond it is, is, is structured to that. So if you submit something to Randy, I would suggest that you break it out in that manner so that you're talking about the cost of phase one, cost of phase two, cost of phase three. And frankly, you only have to do phase one now, but I mean, you know, break it out in that manner.
You know, reviewing it, because of the nature of this stormwater management system, having no catch basins, being all graphs and really having no structures to it at all, $10,000 is probably the, a high estimate for this system. So I think that's probably where we'll land, that's the requirement that's been placed on us from conservation.
Dr. Walts, remember that when you get the bids to do this work, if it's more than 10 grand, you can call this guy, right?
I'll get the shovel out.
Yeah, he's going to be working weekends for you. You know, and, and the last thing I'll say on this and then I'll get, I'll get the hell out of the way, but since you asked, you know, a lot of this, Mike, comes down to performance of the, of the applicant with past experience in our town and, and the, the land company, right? And so far, with only one exception, and I spoke to Rob about it at the time, that we weren't particularly pleased with how the development went against the plan and there was significant deviation from the as-built to the, from the plan, right? And, and I talked to Rob extensively about it. And it's no secret, it was Depot Square, right? But, and they had some issues over there with sidewalks and elevations of getting into driveways, they were trying to get out of some sidewalk issues. And, you know, the argument of, well, my guy built it, didn't build it the way it was on the plan. You know, we held, we hold Levec responsible to what they put their stamp on too. So, but in, in, in the vast majority of our experience with Rob Levec has been extremely positive. So, you know, if they've got a design in front of us, they're not just putting some, something in front of you, you know, that may or may not work, it's going to, it will more than, it, it will work. And, you know, we don't have a ton of experience with Dr. Walts, you know, I give him the benefit of the doubt here. You know, there are other, other applicants that were in front of us, I would be like, yeah, bond the crap out of this, we've got experience with this guy, right? But, you know, in this case, you know, the gentleman's proposing a fairly significant development in our town. That's going to be a net positive for our town, I think we give him an opportunity here. All right, I'll get out of the way.
Good job, Doug.
No, and I agree with that, Doug, and I, you know, nothing that Dr. Walts has done so far has been in any way questionable. I mean, it's, it's been about as professional as you can get, you know, which is again, often different than some of the developers you have coming in. So. All right, so I think my inclination will be to, to defer to DPW on both the, you know, manner and amount of, of security. And let them figure it out. And I would suggest, you know, I think it's, I think it's almost required by the bylaw that, that the applicant submit, you know, the proposal as far as they think costs and allow DPW to evaluate that. So, you know, that on Levec to submit. So anything else that the board or members of the audience wish to discuss, or the applicant for that matter, about this application?
Nothing here.
Okay. All right, so do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second. Who was that, Dick?
Yes.
We'll do a roll call votes, because we're doing this by Zoom. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ratzinger, aye.
Davis Sutton, aye. Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. So. We had, I'm just trying to get in my head what I need to mention here that is substantively important. But we've obviously talked about the DPW comments or what's going to be incorporated as conditions. We talked about the bonding, deferral to DPW. So. Hold on, let me just, I gotta, I gotta have that email. Okay. So do I hear a motion to grant a stormwater management permit for 772 seventy-four college highway? Which be provided in more detail in a written decision and we'll vote on that. But generally and substantively, grant the permits with the conditions regarding the the size of the trucks allowed to deal with the turning radius that being proposed. The coordinating with water water service being provided. And deferring the bond to what DPW usually uses.
Michael, this is more than a stormwater permit, this is a special permit.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking, thank you. Thank you, I have the other one sitting up and I'm looking at that.
I think, I mean, we just, we just continue the work now and write up the decision for the board to review. There's, there's no additional vote required, I believe.
There's no what?
No, no additional vote this evening on this.
I, I mean. I, I mean, I could be wrong, Marcus, and, and maybe my memory is slipping, but usually I think that we vote on the, vote on the application. And that, that was otherwise, what am I writing? I, I, we have to have a vote at some point where we're granting it with this.
We vote on the decision after it's written up and we get to review it, just like the other three were voting on this evening. Thanks.
We were voted on. We haven't voted on applications. We've already voted on applications. I could be wrong. Happy to look back at the minutes, but I'm pretty sure we voted to close the hearing, and then we voted on the applications.
Okay, so we'll say the, the application then for special permit site plan approval and stormwater.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I just misspoke. I was kind of looking at one thing and, and omitting the language I was using. So let me start again and get something on the record that is generally inclusive. And again, it's got, you know, you, you still have your right to vote on what the decision is and how that plays out, but I think you have to vote, you know, yes, no, or, you know, yes, and have that as a, as a vote before you get to the decision. Because otherwise, how, you know, what do, what do you, you're writing three different decisions, I think. But I could be wrong. I don't know. That's, I think that's how we've done it in the past, but certainly correct me if I'm wrong, anybody.
Well, that's okay. Just the idea that it's three items that we're granting, we're bringing to grant.
Yeah, and thank you. I, I do, you're absolutely right. So, give me one second. I actually want to pull up what we did last time.
And I think we vote on the special permit site plan approval.
Each separately.
And then, yeah, the stormwater permit.
No, you're, you're right. I, you're right. Let me, give me one minute so that I can structure this correctly. Just looking at the wrong thing. All right. So do I hear a motion to grant a special permit for 772-774 College Highway with conditions that, as we discussed about before, the limitation on the, on the vehicles that are going to be used on the sites, a condition about the water service and coordination on the water service with the water departments, and the, it's used on the property as well as the bonding that will be required, being deferred to, by, to the opinion of DPW. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Do I hear? We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ottinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Now we will do the site plan approval, again, with the same, built in the same decision with the same conditions. Do I hear a motion to grant a site plan approval for 772-774 College Highway?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Dick, is that you, second?
Yeah, I'll do second.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ottinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. And then finally, a stormwater management permit. Do I hear a motion to grant that, again, with the conditions mentioned before contained in a written decision?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Dick. Moved by Marcus. Roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ottinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. So, so we have generally approved the application. We'll now finish up with the conditions that we talked about at the last, the initial hearing date as well as today, to be included in there. And then we will vote on that at the next meeting, which is sometime in August. I don't know the date.
August 11.
August 11, okay. So, so that'll be the process. Any questions, either Dr. Walsh or Chris?
Just want to thank everybody again for all your efforts. A lot, a lot of thought goes into this, and I appreciate all you're doing.
And I just want to thank the board as well. It's been a real pleasure to work with all the town representatives, including Alan and Randy and all of yourselves, as well as Conservation Commissioner. South is one of the best towns to work with.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So we'll be in touch. I mean, you certainly, you certainly can attend the meeting in August. You certainly don't need to. We're simply going to be considering the, the decision and sort of working out the language of it. But you're obviously welcome to attend and contribute if you need to. But I suspect, sounds like, Chris, you're going to work with Randy on a few things in the meantime, which may, you know, work in as the language that, in the decision. I guess both Randy and Alan. So, you know, any suggestions you have, certainly reach out to specific language.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. That'll close that out. So now we're on to routine business.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So, everybody get a chance to look at the decisions that were circulated, the three stormwater management permit decisions. No, maybe, possibly.
Maybe Megan can take some notes. I found a couple items need to be adjusted.
All right, here's, let's do this. Give me one minute.
Did anybody receive my updates that I sent?
I, I did. That's what I'm going to pull up, if you don't mind. And I'll share the screen so that everybody can look at it. We can just discuss it as we go along, and I can kind of type.
Edit while you go.
So let's start. Why is there only two there? Hold on one second. What do we, what's first on the thing?
The Lakeview, Lakeview, I believe. Seven and Nine Lakeview and 90 Point Grove Road. It's behind the Cove.
Did you have, did you? Jessica, did you edit those?
I thought I did. Did I send it to you not as such?
No, you did. Okay, you did. It just, it wasn't in the title. That's all. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Oh, it's at the very end. I put my initials left at the end. I thought I did. Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I think you missed on that one, but I, that's why I just wanted to make sure I had the, I had your edits and not the original. So let me share the screen here. All right. Can everybody see this? Okay. So, give me one second. Marcus, why don't you, is there anything on this beginning here that you had a change on?
Yes. The end of the sentence, it says a residential B-zone. It should be a business B-zone and residential R-20 zone.
It's, I'm sorry, what, it's, what zones is, it's in? Is it a business and a residential?
See the second line under RE?
Yeah, but what are the two zones?
Instead of residential, it should be business.
Is that what, it's, it's split between business and residential? I just can't remember.
Yes.
Okay.
But it's not a residential B-zone. Business B-zone and residential R-20 zone.
Yeah, no, that's, okay.
That's not the way it's written now.
Yep. All right.
Good one, Marcus.
Okay. I have that. I, just to make it quicker and easier for me, you're not going to see the changes that I'm making. I'm making, I'm sitting on my computer rather than on my iPad, which is where the Zoom meeting is conducted. So, you know, it's going to have to take my word for it that I'm making those changes.
We trust you, Michael.
So, otherwise, we're going to be here forever.
Item one is fine. Item one is fine.
Yeah, let's change.
Jessica caught that. That's good.
Because it's not a special permit.
Didn't have anything else?
Anything else on page two here, Marcus, on the findings?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other board members have any issues with the findings?
Good.
Okay. So, let's see. Okay. We'll go down to the decision.
Decision, that's good. That's special permit site plan approval.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yep. And then terms and conditions. Any on the first here besides what is listed on here?
Nope, looks good.
Okay. Anything else here?
Marcus, where is, where is the date? Where is the date? We use June 10, 2023 as the date the permit would expire. Where, I missed where, is that in the text in there?
Yeah, number five. Sorry.
Well, I can't see it. Number five. Why are we using June 10 rather than today's date?
That's the date we voted on the decision.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, and to be fair, I, I guess, to be fair, I don't know which one you use, but I think you would use the one, oh, I suppose.
I thought we would use today's date because then the clock starts running on the 20 days. Otherwise, the 20 days is already running.
Now.
Twenty day appeal period, the way it's stated here now is already running since June 10.
No, that's not true. It's the date that triggers, actually, it's not the date of time, it's the date that the court clocks it in, that appeal process. I'm not trying to agree with that, but, hold on. I'm just trying to look and see. Just give me one second. Do what we did. I, I don't, honestly, don't remember. I think we can, sure, but in the past, we've used the date that we voted.
Okay.
So, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. So I will accept those changes. And if I hear a motion to addition with those changes for Seven Lakeview Street and 90 Grove Road.
I checked out where more changed. I think, I think there's only pages in the document, but it says of five at the bottom.
Say that again?
Those, I believe there's only four pages, but the bottom, the footer says of five.
There's, there is a fifth one because we have.
Okay.
We need the five, and acknowledgement and certification. It's always kept on a separate page so that Michelle.
Okay.
Execute that.
Got it.
So, I didn't get to that one, but yeah, that's always at the end.
Okay.
I just got to go back. If you guys remember off the top of your head, who's the ones who actually voted on this?
Was.
Marcus. Well, we're, we're just, are we just making a motion to authorize electronic signature of it?
Yeah, but if you didn't vote on it, you probably shouldn't be.
Oh, I see. You mean the list of the names there, recorded.
Everybody was here on the tent.
I think, yeah.
Everybody was here. Okay.
No, that's right.
All right. So, do I hear a motion to, to grant this stormwater management permit as, or to, to approve, accept this and sign this written decision with the changes as noted?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ottinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye. Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Perfect. All right. So, let us go to the next one. go to the next one. Why am I missing one? All right, give me one second. I'm just missing one decision here. Tuesday. All right. Um. So we're going. Next is 108, 110. Which is this one, I believe.
Sunnyside Road.
Row one. Okay, let's try that again.
That looks better.
There we go. All right. 108, 110, 112, Sunnyside Road. Um, Marcus, did you have anything on this before we go through it?
Uh, let me see here. Just a picky one. On the line number one under procedural history. Three single-family homes, plural, S homes.
Okay.
That's it. How Jessica do?
Oh, you know.
Excellent. You like that stormwater?
I, it's something I fixed in the past before, but I'm sure it got copied over, so.
We gotta fix it in the boilerplate, uh, decision document.
Yeah. Nowhere in the world do we hyphenate stormwater as a word.
Yeah, I'm still working on, I got a general template, but I gotta get the specific ones as we belong here and get those over so people can use. All right, so homes, plural. Okay. Uh, let's keep going down. Um. I don't think there's anything on the first page. I can't imagine. Uh, findings. Anything with the general or specific findings?
What was the reference to under B, specific findings, number four? The proposal includes the alterations and improvements to the parking area. That sounds like the one we did for the vape shop going to a car dealership. This is for three single-family homes and they're not altering or improving the parking area, I don't think.
Probably right, Marcus.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, that's boilerplate kind of thing.
All right, I'm gonna see what, um. Okay. Um. Anything else? All right, we'll keep going down. Any issues with the decision? No, hearing nothing. I will move on to the terms and.
Cool.
Um. Anything besides what Jessica has mentioned so far in one through five?
You go away.
No. Um. All right. The one thing I think we have to, and I can keep going just so you can see. Um. Do, um. We have to indicate the waiver.
Yeah, it was in upper part of the, yeah, decision. So we're granting, we're granting the waiver, right?
We have to issue that it's being, um. So I'm gonna change that decision slightly. Let's see.
Maybe you could say, uh, granting the grant to special, or grant to stormwater management permit, including a waiver or something.
I was gonna, it is therefore decided to grant a stormwater management permit in accordance with the terms and conditions uh, and waivers stated below. And that and the terms and conditions will just indicate that, uh. Actually, you know what? I take that back. Um, it would also just put in the findings under six there, applicable waiver under chapters. Twenty-five, you know, blah, blah, blah. Uh, and um. The waivers were approved by the board. That'll be a specific finding. Um. I'll just double check those sections. I think that's right.
Yeah, that L refers to a performance bond. Oh, so we waived the performance bond on this?
Um. I just gotta, do we have the minutes from this or no? Is there? Minutes for June 10?
Yeah, you should. I don't have them currently on me.
Yeah, no, let me just, um. Were they dealt with at the last meeting? Minutes from 10.
I have the minutes up. What are you looking for?
Uh, they're out. It's from the eight. Yeah, let me just hold on. Sorry. Let's find them. Uh, I assume we have the waivers referenced in that, right?
No, we don't.
Section.
Did we? Um. Oh, and Q3. We did it on one, on two states. For some reason, it's not on versus.
Yeah, I think we voted on one formally and the other one, we didn't really vote on formally, but we discussed it. Because it was presented by, uh, just the next person.
It was about the test pits and the drywall. That's, but those are the notes that I have written down.
Yeah, just give me one. Just pull it up.
That referenced chapter 185, section 36.1, sections parentheses four. I don't know where you find that. You could have a a capital letter before that somewhere. I don't know.
All right, hold on. Just give me a minute.
There's a lot of subsections.
Well, here, you know what? Let's, I'm not gonna keep y'all here tonight while we do this. Um, you know, the issue. Uh, we'll just double check it with what we granted. You know, it is.
Yeah.
It is what it is. I mean, I, you know, um. Well, so I'll we'll, we'll, we'll approve this decision with the, you know, condition that we'll double check those sections and make sure they are specifically correct with regard to the waivers that were granted.
Yeah, that would be good to see what they requested in their application.
But they're, you know, at this point, we've already granted. Put it in. Anything else? Like I said, I will put in that the waivers were approved by the board. I will put in the, in the decision section that, you know, in accordance with the terms and conditions and waiver stated below, um. No, actually, I take that back. I don't need to put that into the decision. I will just put it in the specific findings. With the, uh. You know, according to the waivers. Waivers noted above and the terms and conditions stated below. Okay. Um. No issues with the terms and conditions, everybody? Everybody's okay with those? You're saying nothing? And that's everybody's good with those. Um, so do I hear a motion to approve the written decision for 108, 110 and 112, Sunnyside Road? Um. With the changes we've discussed and Jessica has indicated and with the condition that we'll double check those waivers.
Don't move.
Second. Uh, roll call vote. Michael Dougherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Dick Fossinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, an aye.
Okay. There's two down. Um. And. All right, two states. Marcus, anything that you had?
No, it was same items that on the, um, under the decision, cross out the special permit site plan approval. Nothing on the, on these first pages.
Okay. Findings will take off the, um, number four there and the specific findings again.
Oh, right.
Um. Okay. Uh. Again, I'll check the waivers that are specifically being requested and granted. Um, and I will note that they're being granted. I'm gonna just use the exact same language that we use for Sunnyside into this one. Um. Okay, anything else? Anything, um, with the decision or? Okay, hearing nothing. I am going to, let's see. Terms and conditions. Uh, any issues, Marcus?
No, I didn't have any other notes.
Right. All right. Do I hear a motion to, um, accept the written decision for one two states avenue, uh, with the changes we have just discussed and with the condition that we'll double check the, um, sections for waiver.
So move.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Michael Dougherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Offsinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Lou Spina?
Yeah.
Hold on. Dave Spina, you there?
Yep, yep, I'm back. Dave Spina, aye.
Okay, thanks.
Jessica Thor, an aye.
All right. Um, all right. So that's all set. And then minutes for June 30th. Um. For June 30th. Oh, sure. Shouldn't have stopped sharing my screen. All right. Here's.
I had one item up top there. Uh, scroll down a bit. Oh, no, that first, first paragraph. Uh, last part, Jessica Thornton was designated as a voting member.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Anything else on what's on here?
Keep going. I don't see any red.
Um. So Jessica deleted herself. Oh, yeah, you weren't on the A and R.
A and R.
Okay.
Do that as often as possible.
Um.
Community preservation committee. Very good.
Whose dog needs a walk?
Feedback, feedback.
All right. Uh, anything else on this besides what?
Whoa, next meeting? Oh, yeah, July 7th. That's today.
And the, the section on, um, 38 Morton Harding?
Yeah, let me go back. Hold on. Yep.
Um, let's see. Masha, Jan, Masha, that should be. M A.
You're breaking up there, Dave. Say that again? Is it spelled wrong?
Yeah. Her name is spelled wrong, apparently.
M A S H I A.
Yep.
Yep. Got it.
And, uh. Uh, like Mo said, the town would like to, would need to. Was that, I mean, do you say would like to, comma, slash, would need to, or?
Would.
Was it one of the, was it one of the other or?
Oh, yeah, there's two, two woods in there. Yeah. Would like to or would, probably would need to secure funding.
That's my guess, yeah.
I think need, need to is probably.
Too, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Dave?
Nope, that's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, uh, with those changes, uh, do I hear a motion to, uh, approve the minutes of June 30th and, um, um. You know, to authorize electronic signatures on it? you know, to authorize electronic signatures on it?
So move.
For second.
Second.
Um, roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Altzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, an aye.
Okay. There was one other, what the hell else? Um. Let me stop this.
What's happening with the cell tower? We're not advertising that yet?
Uh, we haven't. I, you know, my especially since we're only doing, we have one right in August, and then one in, we start back up in September being, you know, every other week. You know, I think, I think discussing it at the next meeting, letting things sort of see what happens over the next month and you know, we can sort of readdress whether we want to put it on via Zoom for the fall, I, I don't think it's appropriate to put it on, you know, in the middle of August for that, but I, you know, we, we could touch base on that at the August meeting and see whether anybody has any you know, feeling about putting it on for, for September, uh, but right now we have no you know, we haven't put it on and there's no sort of clockwork at this point in time because there's an emergency order that is outstanding, so it's my, and. I'm just trying to think, 'cause there was one thing when I talked to Alan. At the end of last week, I told him to remind me to bring it up at this meeting and now I have forgotten it and he's not here. So I, for the life of me, cannot remember what it was. But, all right then. Anybody else have anything? No, okay. Do I hear, Mr. Sutton, do you have any motions you wish to make?
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Okay, give me a second. Is that Dick?
Yep.
Good, um, yeah, we'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Altzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, an aye.